This organic commission is now open for business.
Commissioner Jackie Duckey will have her invocation.
Let us pray. Our Father who art in heaven, we come before you radiance and glorious broken vessels in need of repair. We lift you high, Lord, than the air we breathe or any dream we could ever perceive. We come realizing that you are almighty and everlasting in every way, and that it is not by our great deeds that we are sustained, but by your grace and your mercy. We ask your blessings over this gathering of leaders chosen by your children, that we may be pleasing in your sight in every way in all our decision-making. Let us always look to you, the often finisher of our fate, and realize that it is you who must and will be pleased with the outcome. Let us always be committed in our doings, not to impress or to gain favor, but simply because it is the right thing to do. We pray your blessings over this county, this state, and this great nation. Let your love rain down over those who protect, defend, and serve it. And we ask that you bring revival to the hearts and spirits of all men that we may join together in seeking peace with one another. We ask this in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the people of our country, stand one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The spirits have a little technical difficulty, but we're getting it resolved. Roxanne will take care of that. We hope. And again, we want to welcome everyone tonight. Glad to hear. Could have a long meeting, could be interesting, so I hope you brought your supper. Slade and bag, but we appreciate all of being here and appreciate your patience. We may have to place a batteries as we've done before. Bobby Seaman, okay. Twenty prayers. For. Yeah, thank you. Commissioners, you have your agenda. You can do. He don't give up. Mr. Walker from District One, he would have been here tonight, but he had a death of a close friend today, so... He's quite upset over that and wishes to be here if we... Let me keep him in a prayer. You got Andy? Read to approve the agenda. Have a motion to... Or discussion on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I've got a question before we leave it on the agenda. Item C under ten, I've had a lot of, I'll say, interest in those committees and possibility of needing to make a lot of changes on those. I guess I would entertain the thought of if people would prefer, I mean, I'd be glad to bring them up for discussion and try to bring them through, but I think there's enough changes they probably need to go back through legislative. I haven't really polled the people on legislative, so I'd like to sort of hear their opinion if they think we ought to revisit those before we bring them forward for approval.
Are you all literally part of the agenda?
Well, I'd like to see. It's on the agenda right now. I'm wondering if we ought to pull it from the agenda and... But I'd like to hear from, you know, from the folks on the... On legislating, since we're the ones that reviewed it originally, but before I would pull it off, if they think it's good enough to bring forward and have discussion, then I'd just leave it on.
Okay, technically, what we would need to do from a primary standpoint, someone needs to go ahead and make motions, approve the agenda, and get a second, and then when it's open for discussion, your folks give you your feel, and at that time, you can amend it however you want to.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Well, second. A motion to second, okay, discussion.
My discussion would be, you know, feelings of particularly legislative, but anyone else, because I've had a lot of people tell me there's a lot of changes that they think need to be made to some of those committees, to help clean them up before they're brought forward.
Mr. Chairman? Just for example, at our caucus, I'm not sure if it was a rural caucus or Manchester Day, but we spent about thirty minutes just coming up with editing things, wordings, some things, and it just seemed like it was bogging down, and so one of the suggestions that Mark's following up on is for all the commissioners to read all these responsibilities, mark them up for editing or any other things, and send them back to legislative, and let them compile them, pull those back together, and then bring them back. I just think out of timeliness, to save a lot of time, is there's really... There's an urgency in getting these done, but it's more important to get them done right. And I think we could wait till the March meeting to do that. But it's up to everybody to read these and make notations and then make, afford their copies of their edited ones to the legislative committee, let them compile it, and then bring them back.
As members of legislative committee, I think that makes sense, what Ms. Brinkin just said, and had to give all the commissioners here an opportunity to submit any changes that they see fit to those committees, and just be sure that gets back into Roxanne's office, so she can get it to legislative committee for the fourth Monday. That's, I would agree that that's the best way to go about it.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we remove NC from the agenda and ask that all of the commissioners provide their response back to Roxanne before, I'm going to say the third Monday in February, so that we would have it available for a February meeting of the legislative.
Second. So we have a motion to second. Any further discussion? Not all of further motion, I've been known by minimum say no. Any opposed, Roxanne? Pardon? Excuse me. Now we entertain a motion, or a vote on the motion, the agenda as amended or as presented.
Mr. Chairman, would you consider any other changes to agenda first?
Still on.
Okay. Resolution oh five.
Mr. Brown, that's the board.
Certainly. What I was just going to say is, is it proper right now to go ahead? I believe that resolution oh five needs to be added to the agenda also, doesn't it? Right, four, actually, um...
Four, eight.
Four relate to H, so we really need to add, I guess, after H, resolution oh four, and then resolution oh five. So I'm moving that we do that.
Bobby, as a clarification on oh four, we have an option A and option B, if I understood that. Is that right, Mr. Husky? So it would be adding both of them for consideration.
So a motion on four and five to amend to add?
Yes, motion to add oh four and oh five at the end.
I have a second in that. Second, okay. Further discussion? Discussion? Let's vote, please.
Show me, yes.
They can't. They can't open.
Mr. Mayor, could we make a motion that we let him use warrants and make that the conversion in the record that the votes registered there contributed to body?
You okay with that?
All of these are going back to the county tomorrow.
When we come back tomorrow, it's everybody having to do.
I was going to make that as the next motion.
And I'm glad Andy's back, so he can take care of these issues. Will that ought to be worn for tonight? Does that work? Think so? Andy, may I cancel this vote, so we start over on? Try again. Okay, let's vote, please. Warning, downloading. Andy, where we had this in there before? In the audience, all right, please. We need to put these in the budget for next year to replace.
Mr. Mayor, can we do the non-financial by... By acclamation, and the financial and resolution part, do those by roll call?
Yes, we have. Roll call? Okay.
We could use acclamation for a lot of this, though. Then I'd make a motion that we suspend the rules and that we use acclamation vote on non-financial and non-resolution.
Roll call for those. Have a second motion? Have a second.
This will require two thirds votes, and we'll need to show a hand on this one. Or we can call one.
Now, show of hands, if we have any for discussion, but if not, we just go ahead. Okay, show of hands. Motion carries. Okay, by acclamation, we'll do the agenda by acclamation. If you want to adjourn, please say aye. Any opposed, Roxanne? Motion carries. Item six, review and approval of the minutes, previous meeting.
Motion to approve.
Have a second? Say a second, all in favor, let me know, say aye. Any opposed, Roxanne? Motion carries. Resolution of memorial, sympathy, and commendation. We have none. We have none.
Eight elections, appointments, and confirmations. Eight notaries. I know what you're going to say, Rush, but can we add Kathy White to that list? Okay, all right.
I make a motion to approve the notaries on the list, plus Kathy White. Second.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, let me know, say aye. Any opposed, Roxanne? Motion carries.
Eight B, Purchasing Commission. And the members of the Purchasing Commission will be Anne Frisbee, Mayor Cordell, Rush Brinkin, Margaret Cunningham, and David O'Rourke.
Have a motion to accept that motion?
Over.
Second the motion? Any discussion? Let's vote, please, all in favor, let me know, say aye. Any opposed, Roxanne? Motion carries.
Eight C, Beer Board.
There was a question in conference. Yep, you had a question today, though, about that being rule only? Or did you want to review that?
Right.
Or, see, you all discussed that a lot ago.
Bobby, I was approached beforehand, and I just, that may want to go back to the legislative for review before we make the change in the appointments on it, because there was a question about whether that should be rule only, and that's fine with me if... But I didn't get a chance to talk with you beforehand, I'm sorry.
Mr. Mayor, since those are your appointments, I'll yield to you on what to do with that.
We had a recommendation last night from rural caucus that these be rural commissioners only, and we talked about, I wanted to present Major Shelton, Dennis Hunt, Margaret Cunningham, Tim Morris, and Bobby Bryan, those being five rural commissioners.
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
I'll lay it to you. Have a second to that motion? The motion second, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I wouldn't, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with that end of it, because that does affect the entire county, and I'm not sure why it would be rule only.
I'd like to make the motion. Somebody?
I was going to say, I'd like to make a motion to send this back to the legislative committee first to look at this.
I second that motion.
A motion second?
Part of order, we already have a motion with a second on the floor.
The motion to refer to the committee can be entertained at this time, and if the motion to refer to the committee is voted on and passed, then this goes to the committee. If the motion to refer to the committee is voted on and failed, then you go back to discussion on the rest of the motion.
The motion on floor is to revert, but we didn't have a discussion at this point.
You can discuss to refer to the committee, but you're not ready to discuss in the motion. Now you're discussing whether or not to refer to the committee.
The one point that was raised there, as far as the beer board, Manchester and Tahoma takes care of all those within their city limits, and the beer board here are only established which is outside the city limits in the rural area. So just to clarify that a little bit.
Past membership, though, was not all rural, is that correct?
That is correct.
So we're changing the precedent. I would like, on that grounds, I would like to see you go back to legislative and hold the discussion. You may come back this way, I just think we ought to discuss it some before we make that kind of a policy change without having any house second.
Any further discussion? Motion made.
The rural caucus, when we discussed this, I think, I don't think anybody can argue the point that all beer licensing taking place inside the city limits of Manchester, Tahoma are handled by their own beer. And a beer board of coffee county never is involved in beer licensing within the city limits of them. So the constituents, even all the members of the beer board, are constituents in the rural county areas. So that's the basis for this action.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that. Like I said, I'm not sure it will come back any different, but it is a major change. I mean, that has never been the case since I've been on this commission for the past eleven years now, and it's always been a mixture across the county, and if we're making that policy change, I'd like to have it go through a discussion phase in legislative and be brought forward under that basis, so that, you know, we have a meeting of the minds that we're changing a policy across the county. I just think that's the right place to begin.
Any further discussion? The repeated motion, that is, the motion is to refer back to the legislative committee, we have a second to that.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, let's vote, please. Motion being referred back to committee. Show of hands. Motion fails. Back to the original motion. The original motion, then, is to the appointment of the five rural commissioners, as I mentioned, Major Shelton, Dennis Hunt, Margaret Cunningham, Bobby Bryan, and Tim Morris. Go ahead, say. Any further discussion? Further discussion? If there being none, let's vote, please, by show of hands. All in favor of the motion? Motion carries. Thank you.
Eight D, County Coroner, and this will be Dr. Brandon.
Have a motion to accept?
I make the motion to accept, Dr. Al Brandon.
Have a motion, have a second to the motion? Second, discussion? If there being none, all in favor of the motion, let me know, say aye. Any opposed, Roxanne? Motion carries.
Eight E, Rural Roads and Bridges.
Mr. Bryan.
Mr. Chairman, rural caucus wanted to put a nomination commissioners R. Graves, D. Ford, Hunt, O'Rourke, and Farren.
Fine.
I'll make a motion to add that.
We have a motion from the recommendation. We have a motion from the recommendation of Rural Caucus. Second. Motion second, any discussion? There being none, all in favor of the motion, let me know when you say that. Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
Eight F, Agriculture Committee. Basil Hockett will replace Chris Anderson, and also Major Shelton and Dennis Hunt will be in the blank spaces on the committee list.
Have a motion to accept those names as presented. Second? Second by Commissioner Martin. A discussion?
Would you repeat the names again?
Basil Hockett, Major Shelton, and Dennis Hunt.
That's traditional, if you've had recommendations of two. And Tim's already on it, he's not up for it. Yeah, these are just three that's up for him. Tim Morris, red vote. Okay. And second by Kim Martin. Discussion? There being none, all in favor of the motion, let me know when you say that. Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
Nine one one, eight G is nine one one communications.
And the recommendation from the communications body was Joe Hinch, J.C. Farrell, and Steve Graves. We have that as a motion.
I'm voting.
Yes, sir.
Have you added another name for validation?
I had a motion to accept those votes. We, we don't have a second yet to that motion. And, so, you know, you can, did, did we have a second? I didn't hear a vote. I don't think so.
Second? You got one name?
If you got a second, then you can make a motion to amend adding another name, and then the commission, if you only got five spots or four spots, you're gonna have to...
Got three.
Three, you're gonna have to elect between them. Well, in this case, you know, I don't know if you're making me a hand, not like, not personal, but, but that would be a process.
Well, I think it'll be simple, yes or no on this one. I'll, in, in place of Mr. Farrell, I'd like to nominate Mark Kelly as an amendment to that motion.
Okay. So, the amendment will need a second, they'll have to be voted on before we go back to the mic.
They have a second to that amendment?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jones. Discussion? The amendment?
The only question I might have, Mr. Mayor, is, who are the three chief primary law enforcement officers in the county? Now, my understanding is the nine one one district communication is requested that they be represented on that nine one one committee. And that's the way it's always been, but, of course, Steve Graves.
As Sheriff and Mark Yoker.
Mark Yoker.
Right. Manchester.
And then Tallahassee.
That's only consolidate communications for Chief Blackwater.
The current one more, there's, we got nobody to talk about that fact, whether that's supported or not.
Right now, the current members that are not up for reappointment are Mark Yoker, Ross Simmons, Jimmy Bradford, Tilden Stubblefield, representing those two, representing Tallahassee, Bonnie Norman, and Jerry Brown, representing the rural. The three that are up for, three positions that have currently been held by Mr. Joe Hinch, Mr. J.C. Farrell, representing Tallahassee, and Steve Graves, representing Manchester.
Mr. Chairman, again, we're not talking, there's two bodies here, this Communications Committee, and then the nine one one District Communications Committee. So we're talking about the nine one one District Communications Committee. And, and again, these are, the, the Tallahassee appointments, J.C. Farrell.
Yes, sir.
Our caucus is that, and we'd like to put Mark Kelly.
Right.
In, in place of, of Mr. Farrell. It's not, and I think that's...
And we have a second to that motion.
The discussion right now should be limited by the number of...
To the amendment on, Mr. Kev. All in favor of the motion, let me know when you say that. Of the amendment, of Mr. Kelly, representing Tallahassee, let me know when you say that. Any opposed, like sign?
Back to the motion as amendment, which will insert Mr. Kelly's name instead of the other candidate.
So now the motion on the floor will be a recommendation of Mr. Joe Hinch, Mr. Mark Kelly, representing Tallahassee, and Sheriff Graves. Have a motion.
If you have a motion, you don't have to have any more discussion.
Any more discussion?
Has Mr. Farrell taken off the list now?
This will take him off, because you've had the amendment to put Mr. Kelly in, representing Tallahassee, in his place. Because we only have three positions left. One, one appointment for Tallahassee, and Mr. Hinch, and Mr. Graves. So that would remove him, yes?
The original motion was made and seconded with, with three names, one of them being Mr. Farrell.
And we replace it, Farrell, and Kelly.
And the amendment replaced Mr. Kelly in place of Mr. Farrell. That, that amendment passed. So now then, we're ready to vote on the motion as amendment, which will be those three.
Mr. Hinch, Mr. Kelly, Mr. Graves.
Who's seconded the amendment? We don't have that.
I second the amendment.
Ms. Cracker.
Can I ask another question? Of course, I do, I don't understand why we're even voting if it's an appointment by a mayor.
This body has to remember by all...
Yeah, I make the recommendation of the former suggestion, and the body ratifies that. That's the purpose of the vote, our presentation's right. All those in favor of the motion as presented, let be known by a show of hands? Any opposed? Motion carries.
I did put eight H on the agenda, but it really doesn't have to be voted on by this body, and they will be the second of the door oriented Establishment Board. And the members will be the same, Marty Scott, Alan Sweeten, Virgil Alford, Donnie Thomas, and Charles Harris. Eight I, Emergency Management Agency Board. And... I mean, Randall Brecker will be representing Tallahassee, and Adam Floyd will represent Manchester.
And I believe Dale Brandon.
Is that Dale Brandon?
That Brandon.
Dale Brandon's gonna start it, huh?
Yes. Those, those are it? Okay. Motion is seconded, any discussion? All in favor, let me know when you say that. Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
Eight J, Planning Commission. Chris Anderson will take the mayor's place, mayor was on planning. And Lee Duckett, Alan Howard, and Tim Morris will remain on the planning.
Those are mayor's appointments. Have a motion to that effect?
So good.
Motion second, discussion? There being none, all in favor of the motion, let me know when you say that. Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
Eight K, Coffee County Board of Appeals. Barbara Buckner will replace Hazel Finley. That's only change from there.
So we have that as a recommendation? Have a motion to, for Ms. Buckner to replace Ms. Hazel Finley? Motion, have seconded the motion? Second by Commissioner Duncan. Discussion? All in favor of the motion, please, let me know when you say that. Any opposed, like sign? Motion carries, so Barbara Buckner, as a notice, is the new representative on board.
And that's all I have, on the election appointments confirmations.
Thank you, commissioners. Unfinished business? Rural business?
Ten, new business. Eight, 2015 County Road List.
Motion to approve, this submitted, have second? Second by Major Shelton. Discussion? No discussion, all in favor, let me know when you say that. Any opposed, like sign? Motion for the road list as submitted is approved.
Ten B, Resolution 2015-01, a resolution to renew authorization previously given to the Coffee County 911 Emergency Communications District to build a new 911 center at Jack Wilkes Drive in Manchester, and to enter into a loan in an amount not to exceed 1.5 million secured by and payable from revenues derived from 911 fees, as received pursuant to state law, and lease to the ECD, the county-owned property at same location, without any financial obligation to the county or cities of Manchester and Tallahassee.
Motion by Major Shelton, through, have second? Second by Commissioner Cunningham, discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I certainly, I know the 911 Board is independent, and I'm sure they're in need of a new building. I, and again, only this commission can, can be maybe a, a, a voice of direction, but I raise the issue, and I certainly would like the 911 Board, before they break ground and commit to a new building, at least give a serious, and I don't mean just a blow it off look, at using the, the Sheriff's Department facility as a replacement for the 911 before they build this. I just think it's, it's, we own it, we've got to find a good use for it, and I just can't imagine that location not working. But I don't know. I just wish they would take it a serious look at it.
Rush, are you talking about the building or property?
I guess both. I mean, it's...
There's no room, there's no room in the building. It's already small enough, it definitely could put communications in there.
I, I mean, I don't know. I just, honestly, I just wish they would just say, you know, think outside the box and say, guys, can we make this work? I don't know.
Rush, I'm sorry, I thought you meant the new facility.
Oh, no, I'm talking about the...
Yeah, I, I understand.
No, I'm not talking about the new facility. I'm talking about going into the old Sheriff's Department, and, and for $3 million, and trying to make that into a very nice facility without building a new one.
Would not the cost of the towers be...
The commu, the wiring could be connected. In fact, it might be a, a good deal not to have the building and the towers right next to each other. I mean, if you're thinking about it, a disaster, it could hit both of them at the same time. This way, you only get one affected. I don't know, I just, I just know we're gonna have an empty shell of a building, and this might be a way of salvaging.
Well, I don't think, just because you have an empty shell sitting over there, that we necessarily need to move equipment, towers, and all that, just because we have all the shelves.
I'm not talking about the towers.
Well, I don't think it, you know, I don't necessarily think it's very practical to move all that equipment and, and all that, when you've already got...
They're gonna be moving it...
...to do with the property you got there.
They're gonna be moving it into a new building, so it's gotta be moved. Just question of whether they move it to a refurbished building or to a new building. I don't know, Margaret, I, I just think the county citizens, and again, when the citizens are attacked, we all, we're all paying a dollar sixteen cents for every little line you have. Cell phone, landline, beginning January this year. Dollar sixteen a month, might not seem a lot, but over your lifetime, you're paying some serious 911 dollars. And, and it just, there's a public body here, and I just don't think it's too much to ask for a serious consideration. And if it works, God, they'll be heroes. I think, I'll, I'll give them, I'll give them a hero award. It's just so easy to build new, and we just walk away from old stuff without giving it consideration.
Well, you know, this has been an old plan for a long time, to try to, to build a new building. This isn't a new, new plan, I mean, it's been in the works for a long time.
But the sheriff's vacating this whole building wasn't known three years ago. So, I mean, we just have a new opportunity. I just, all I'm asking, and again, it's an independent body, I don't think, I mean, I guess we could, we could, I guess I could make a motion to this, and see if it applies, for the 911 Board to do a study, a complete study of why they could not use the existing Sheriff's Office for 911. It might come back for a lot of good reasons why it won't work, but if you don't look at it seriously, it's certainly not gonna happen.
Mr. Brinkin, not to interrupt, but how about the workhouse options being considered?
Well, Bobby, this again, the workhouse still could work there, it's, it's a separate place, I mean, I don't know the, I don't know the engineering, I don't know the square footage requirements. I just know we, we will have an X number of square foot that could be possibly repurposed nicely. Again, I'm not talking about doing the, the $3 million, you can do a lot, I think.
Can I make a motion to that, or Rush, you didn't make a motion, correct? I'd like to make a motion.
Excuse me, Commissioner. On, on what, what y'all got on the floor right now, is this resolution? And amendments to a motion can be made, but according to Robert Rude's order, you can't change the original intent of the motion. So, y'all either got to pass this resolution or fail the resolution. You can refer it to a committee, you can table it, but you, you can't really make an amendment that changes the original intent of the motion.
Mr. Attorney General, if I wanted to make a modification to this resolution, I certainly could make a modification to the resolution.
Yes, sir, that you can.
Rush, make sure I understand what you're, what you're saying. I think you're, you're saying, before you proceed building a new building and breaking ground, take a look at what we have, and I don't know for sure all the construction of that building, but from going through it, it appears to me that it's pretty... it, it appears to me that it's a pretty sound building. It was built as a jail, it's probably got reinforced, you know, reinforcement rods in it, poured concrete and block and things that would make it fairly weatherproof in case you had a tornado or, you know, things that we would have problems with here. And it's located in an area that's pretty easy to control if you had to control that area for some reason for a natural disaster, as opposed to having a place a long way away from other places. And I'm like you, I don't know if it's suitable, you sure don't want it to be not a quality product when you get done. I mean, you'd want something that the people would be proud of and be glad to go to work there, not, not just paint the walls and walk in. I don't think that's what you're asking, but what would a real study be? And is it usable? I don't know the sizes of each of the cells and things that are there, can that be converted to a good workspace, an effective workspace? And it would be nice not to have to build a new building if we had something that it would help us not have to maintain sitting there in the future.
We have a motion on the floor, any other discussion?
My motion is to amend Resolution 15.01 and add on the top page that says therefore be resolved by the county legislative body in session assembled, that after a complete study by the 911, I guess the 911 Board, of the possibility of using the existing sheriff's offices and facilities on 300 Hills World Boulevard, that, all right, lost my language here. So after a study of the possibility that, this is going to get bogged down, because I would like to see that study come back to this body and-
Mr. Brinkin, in all honesty, I think you can do what you want to do, but I think y'all got to fail this resolution, because you are changing the intent of the resolution. This is on the agenda, and so you could, if y'all fail it, then you could make the motion that they do that, or at this time, you could actually make the motion to refer this back to them to do what you're doing, what you're wanting done.
Mr. Brinkin, would that not be, I'm going to say more appropriate, if this were to vote down now, when can it come back up?
Well, I guess it'll come back up tomorrow, or, you know, next time y'all meet.
Yeah, then it'd have to be somebody who voted, voted it down to bring it back.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay. But if we were to refer it back and give them a little time to come back, then we would have better understanding maybe and could act on it without making a possible longer.
Yes, sir, I would say that would be your best way to proceed.
I move to refer Resolution 15-01 back to the 911 with the proviso that they study feasibility of using the existing sheriff's department and report back to the legislative
Second the motion? Second by Commissioner Barton? Discussion?
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, is that a clarification, is that an amendment?
No, that's a motion to refer. If any, any general motion and being referred by this commission.
I'm not sure who can answer this question, but the way I understand it, this is, this resolution to build this building's got to be totally paid for, the 911 fees and no cost to the county. Is that 1.5 million going to be available to the 911 people in the event we chose to renovate an existing building? Will that money be available? In other words, if you've got the 1.5 million coming and you go with Rush's idea to renovate an existing building, would that give you, say, $750,000 to maybe invest in technology like new communications equipment and all that? That's the question I have. Is the 1.5 million available whether to build a new building or renovate an existing building? Does anybody know the answer to that?
Yes, the 1.5 million dollars is a loan, and again, I know they've done some preliminary loan requests to, in the banking world. The cash flows of the 911 Board will easily finance a million and a half of debt whether they use it for equipment or property. So they, they'll have the funds, it's just a matter of whether they can use those funds more economically by refurbishing the building or not.
Any further discussion?
I guess my only other comment is, this has been sitting in the wings for six years and I guess I'd be willing to give them a couple of months to, to the next meeting to, to take a look, like Brett says, a feasibility study. Sometimes renovations are more difficult and more costly than building a new building, and that might be the answer they come back with, but I sure like to hear that there was honest consideration and then, again, make it a nice place is, is part of that requirement.
Again, the motion is to refer back, refer this back to, for further study. Any further discussion? There being none, all in favor of the motion as proposed, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed like aye?
No.
Shall we do a show of hands? All in favor of the motion to approve, let me know by show of hands. Thirteen, yes. Any opposed? Well, all opposed, with show of hands. Motion passes thirteen to six.
Okay.
Second.
Is that both of them?
Yes.
Motion second to approve, both voted in as presented. There being none, all in favor of the motion to approve as submitted, let me know by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed like aye? Motion carries.
10A, jail inspection committee and appointment, appoint members.
I'm going to ask that we defer this and refer it back to the committee, because I think there's still some issues in getting the membership correct on this.
Have a second the motion?
Mr. Chairman, we still have the motion on the floor and then the motion to refer.
The motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion to, to accept this.
Second.
Second, discussion?
Now I'll make the motion to defer.
Motion to defer with a second, I think someone mentioned, Mr. Doublefield, discussion?
Well, we just want to defer into who?
Back to the legislating to take a look. I believe that the membership has laid out that it doesn't meet the requirement of the state regulation, and I think we need to, to get that correct before we move forward
Okay, I guess. Got two months, who's doing jail inspections, Mayor?
We have a committee already in force, an existing committee to do that, the inspection portal.
Law enforcement committee?
Yes. Supported by law enforcement.
I just want to be sure that this isn't delayed.
The committee established now forces inspecting the existing jail.
And this is the one, Rush, where the county body is supposed to appoint three householders and three owners, not supposed to be anybody from the commission of statute or gibbets it. And that's not what we've been doing, it requires a certain set of requirements on it. They must visit, examine it at least once a month, not quarterly. There's several things like that that are incorrect, and I think we need to fix that before we approve the committee for the next year.
I understand, I understand that, but I thought the mayor's appointments were going to be non-commissioners and would satisfy this action, sir.
I think that this jail committee, this jail inspector's committee just came out in the new book that came out in July of 2014. That's why it hasn't been done that way.
I said it's due C test manual, section 1447.
Yes, sir. I'm finding out that some of those new committees in this book, they're not, the state doesn't even have all the rules and regulations yet on them.
Yeah, that's the same thing I've been running into, trying to run these down. And some of them, and if I understand this right, this actually, the legislation, the DCA took place about three years ago, three or four years ago. So we're doing some catch-up, and I'd like to clean it up before we put it in, in facts for the next year. I'd like to just sort of keep going with what we have for the next meeting if we do.
I know the section he's referring to is, reports three householders, free owners, now in illegal, I went to a session, the mayor had legal issues and admission there for, but says free owners, residents of the county, acting as effective, and not commissioning. So we have-
You have a motion to refer.
Motion to refer.
To the next meeting.
To the next meeting, have a second. Again, second. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed like aye? Motion passes to refer back to the committee. Major Tim.
10F, Resolution 2015-02, resolution to authorize cooperative purchasing agreements for the use and benefit of all county departments.
Motion to approve, we have a second motion? Second by Commissioner Grabtree, discussion? There being none, all in favor of the motion, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed like aye? Thank you, motion carries.
10G, Resolution 2015-03, resolution to allow the Coffee County Emergency Management and Homeland Security Agency to recoup expenses or services.
Motion to approve, we have a second, second, second by Commissioner Brennan, discussion?
I just want to make sure people understand, this is the part where under RIPRA, Incirpa and the federal laws, where if somebody spills something and we're stuck with a cleanup, we can go back against them and collect those cleanup costs and use it to replenish our funds. In this case, it'll be designated funds going back to this group who paid for the cleanup, and they'll keep their budget open during the year.
Thanks for that, appreciate you mentioning that. Any other discussion? Ready to vote, all in favor of the motion, let me know by saying aye. Any opposed like aye? Motion carries. Thank you.
GMH, train performance contract presentation. Resolution, Resolution 2015-04, resolution to proceed with the next phase of the train evaluation process to reduce energy costs.
I'd like all of you to receive a copy of this, we edited it earlier, but any, any motion of that effect, sort of? I have two, really, I'm bothering.
Let me explain and decide where to go. I was given the information that basically the resolution needs to be drawn to proceed with the matter, and that basically the economic savings would satisfy and any deficiencies would be covered by train, and that the cost of the, the bond would not exceed $250,000 a year. I drew it in that fashion, and then was thereafter advised that train said it might go up to $300,000, but the commitment we had of the information I had on it was limited to 250,000 that they would cover up to. So I drew the, drew the first one as I understood it to be, that it would be capped at 250,000 and that the cost would be, I'll be go with it, was past that. And then I drew one that satisfied what I understood they had raised, and that says that it would not exceed $250,000, or that their obligation would exceed that level, but the cost might go to 300,000. I've been advised tonight that train has said we could just change it to 350,000, and I think Tim worked some wording on it, on the alternate one, that says the, the cost of the bond should not exceed the savings plus the contribution from train.
It won't exceed the guaranteed annual savings plus the contribution by train. And that's at the bottom of the paragraph, it says, whereas the exact size of the bond has yet to be determined, however, the annual cost of the bond should not exceed. And then I want to strike the rest of that paragraph and insert this, the guaranteed annual savings plus the contributions from train.
So the bottom line is, you've got two nicely drawn resolutions, but neither one of those is really going to fit the situation now. I think what you, that you recommended, that Tim just read, is the adaptation to send it to second.
Would you read that again, Tim? This is the bottom paragraph that I'm going to read, it says, whereas the exact size of the bond has yet to be determined, however, the annual cost of the bond should not exceed the, and then I want to strike the rest of that top paragraph. It goes all the way to the next page over, and I want to insert this statement, that it should not exceed the guaranteed annual savings and the contributions from train, which means that all this money, the savings from this program will pay for the bonds. That means Coffee County School's not on the hook for anything, and we're not on the hook for anything. Whatever they guarantee us that we're going to save is what we can borrow out to, and that way, there's no cost of the tax burden.
Whereas the exact size of the bond has yet to be determined, however, the annual
cost of the bond should not exceed the guaranteed annual savings and contributions from train. That means if they don't make their annual savings, they're going to match that, bring us up to those guaranteed annual savings. And then strike the rest of that paragraph.
I'm not sure that wording is- I'm not sure that wording is correct, because it says not to exceed the guaranteed annual savings and the contributions by train, or from train. That looks to me that that becomes additive, so that you're going to, if you're borrowing three hundred and a thousand dollars a year, that's the guaranteed savings, and then train, because you only got two hundred and fifty, then you added that amount to it. I think that's what those words just said. And I don't think that's the intent. I think it's, would be the guaranteed annual savings, including the contributions from train.
That'd be a better.
Okay. You okay? That was Mark.
Yeah, okay.
Discussion of what? And reworded again?
As we worded.
Well, we have, for football, we're going to have another presentation tonight by the train coach for, for Tom.
Therefore, that first call, no seven of the commissioners did not hear that presentation last week. They have come now to do somewhat of an abbreviated, because I do want the commissioners to be informed to know what they're voting on.
Before they come up and do that, I guess I'll ask a question. I'd like to have them make their presentations so everybody has the information before we vote on this. But at the same time, I guess I have a question. And it really goes to the rural side of the house to start with, and that is, if you bring this thing forward and we move to the next phase, there is going to be a financing cost somewhere down the road on this. The first year, we're not going to have the full amount of savings, I wouldn't think, since it takes them a couple of years to get through the project before you get all of the savings. So during that period, we may have to be borrowing money or paying interest on a bond before we get to that step. And if we don't do that through the rural debt service, then it will be eighty-eight months. So I'd like to know if rural's comfortable with having to fund that part, is there, as their next step? And then I still have the concern that we need to have some understanding with the Board of Education about how these monies are going to be used and what benefit, you know, how much am I going to be able to defer future cost increases because they're going to be able to take care of some of those cost increases and have some kind of an understanding of how that financial obligation is going to be before we get into it and find out that, well, we still have to just keep spending money on you.
Randy, are you in awe of able to come up now, if it's okay, to streets where we are and let you guys make the presentation and maybe ask some questions? I would like our commission to help. This is free time to ask you whatever they want to. I have still a lot of questions.
Absolutely. I'm going to give like two in the presentation.
I appreciate these two gentlemen coming again to, if anybody wants to ask for any questions, folks out.
Mr. Mayor, before we get into their presentation, can we suspend for about five minutes and give everyone a break, and then come back?
Motion for recess?
I'll make a motion.
So, second, second by. I've been on saying aye. I don't suppose we're moving to fifth, so we recess for about it. Let's come to order, please. Please come to order. We have these two gentlemen again from train to resume at the early, at the outset. I asked if you brought your sleep bags tonight, so here we go.
Hi, I'm Randy Baldwin of the train.
Our end.
And this is Oliver Vanner, the train also. Thank you very much for allowing us to be here. Appreciate you putting on, us on the agenda. Also, I'd like to thank Dr. McCall and members of the school board who are Board of Education members tonight, too. They've seen the presentation before. They know we've been working with for quite a while. I know you all have booklets in front of you, and the back of the booklet is the detailed presentation. I'm not going to go through that detailed presentation yet this time. I appreciate, I'm going to go through abbreviated presentation for you, not to, and give you more time to answer the questions. One thing I did lay on your local, your spots there, if you shared, is a news article from the Playborn Progress. And this was just recently released less than a month ago, and you can read through that yourself to see how they are performing with train and the benefit we're bringing to schools. They are about the same size of school district you are. Um, again, I would thank you for coming tonight. Uh, the. As you can see here, we've been working with the schools since two thousand twelve. I thought far we'd go back to, but I also look here and see in May of two thousand fourteen, we were able to capture a grant from the state of Tennessee for twenty-five thousand dollars by working with your schools to help improve your schools, too. And here we are tonight, January two thousand fifteen, and you know it's resolution before use of the project in court. This project is not a train, this is something the train does because we are a certified ESCO, an interview savings company. The United States government has determined that they can, they've come up with this program to help school buildings, county buildings, other municipal buildings use future savings to be able to afford programs and do them and get real projects done for your, for your buildings to be able to save money and use those savings in a guaranteed fashion to help improve your buildings and environment. This does not replace your budgets. This is a program era. This does not make, this is not a capital project. This is not operations project. This is a third avenue, a third revenue stream to help allow you to be able to do some of this much-needed work to improve your school buildings and county buildings that are with energy savings. Why use performance contracting? There's many reasons why. Uh, you know, what we can tell you right now, it's studies by Granger, the company Granger, has told us that it costs six times more to do an emergency replacement of equipment than it does by doing preventative maintenance and by doing our scheduled maintenance, or scheduled replacement on that equipment. An emergency situation, you're needing it quickly, you're needing it fast, and you're having to pay for that to get it in there soon for the form of building. How does this work? What we do, we look at, we look at gas, water, electric costs. We're able to identify areas with savings in your buildings, but basically, for this project, train is going to find every penny to cover this project. It's not going to cause you to die or your taxpayers to die to do this program. One other area, too, that we want to make sure we stress upon as well, there are rebates that are coming out right now from PDA, Tennessee Valley Authority. We've already been able to capture one rebate from the schools for the Energy Efficient Schools Initiative. These are Tennessee Valley Association rebates, and they are, they're coming out as well. We are queuing up those for Coffee, to pursue those for Coffee County Schools in this project. So we're working on that. Basically, those savings that have been going out the window, you've been losing in inefficiencies of your buildings, we're able to capture those and put those back into your schools. What our goal is, is to improve the learning environment of your schools, to get Coffee County Schools the best possible learning environment for the classroom. A real simple graph here. On the left, the pie chart shows you what you're currently spending now. On the right, you can see our projected cost in lieu of. What we want to be able to take that and put that back into your schools, that's what you're currently losing in inefficiencies in your buildings for a nation. But what we also want to do is give the schools some net savings to begin with. That's that green area. So there's additional savings that we want to give to the schools above the guaranteed areas. Our performance contracting program is pretty simple. This was based and designed after Knox County School and Knox County Government. If we come into your schools and we say we're going to save you two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, and we only save two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, we write you a check for the difference. Train does that. We're a large company, and that's why we're a certified ESCO, we're able to do that. The best part's this, is if you come in every year, and the next year, and you save two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, you keep it. There are no shared savings. There are no stipulated savings. We reconcile this annually, just like you do your books on financials for the county government and the school's government. There's no cost to you. The cost for the counties to do this is nothing, and we guarantee the performance of this. Uh, various targets. When you think about train, of course, you're thinking about HVAC. You think about how, well, how good this room feels right now versus stepping outside of it. But what we do is we look at other areas outside of HVAC, because that's the efficiencies and inefficiencies of your building that we've identified. Lights, water, gas usage. There's other things that we look at as well to help your building. Things like the building and weatherization. How is your building envelope doing? Amazing studies we've done to find out what works and separated from school buildings. You're losing efficiency there, and that just happens over time. Here's a picture of some areas, of some of the types of replacements we've done. We talked about the other things, but control. Being able to give your maintenance staff for your schools the ability to change temperature in a classroom from a smartphone. So that is, won't have to go get in a, get in a truck, drive across county on a Friday night, go change the temperature in a gym because of the basketball game or a concert there, and you're not spending overtime on that. So they can make the change from a smartphone and save you an operational dollar or two. Here's a great picture of a classroom of engineered lighting examined. To classroom on the left, a couple of things here to look at. First is the overall color of the classroom. But secondly is looking at light fixtures up there. Look at the ceiling in the classroom. You can see the classroom on the left, there is an open ceiling. What we did as part of our performance contracting at this school district is we lowered the ceiling in the classroom. That improved the efficiency of the classroom, number one, but it also improved the acoustics from the teachers in that classroom. And it makes the learning environment better for the students. So more comfortable environment, better indoor air quality, but also look at bottom line. You can see where the classroom was performing per day before and after. That's the savings that we can do for your schools. What we've done to this, we've gone through a couple of steps already, you saw earlier, we've done feasibility study for your schools, and we've done preliminary audit. The preliminary audit is done by train engineers. We've gone through a look at your schools, and right now, we found six million, just under seven million dollars of projects at your schools that need to be done, that can affect the efficiency of the buildings, that can affect your utility spending. So the savings on that is just under three hundred and forty thousand dollars for the annual. During this audit, there's, we've done this off of train people. Everything we've done right now in the last two years has not cost a penny of money. We've done this to make sure that we can be able to cover the costs on this. But what we also recognize is that self-funding project, that self-funding alone, it's not going to cover all the needs of the schools. So we'll look for the next slide, and you'll see these are the areas that we've identified right now at preliminary audit stage. Now, like you say, you're in an airplane. The feasibility study, thirty thousand feet. The preliminary study is twenty thousand feet. So it's twenty thousand foot view. We've got over three and a half million dollars of real property improvements for your buildings. Guaranteed annual savings. We can see right now, this footage is over two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for Coffee County Schools. That points to your current preliminary, that's your current cost of what you're spending right now is a dollar forty each per square foot. We're going to take you down to a dollar ten cents a square foot. There's real improvement. So with that, you're currently spending almost one point one million dollars that you totally spend per year. We've identified, we can say roughly two hundred and sixty thousand dollars per year, twenty-four percent savings on this. Again, that's funding over three and a half million dollars of the real property improvements we talked about. And again, no out of money needed from your taxpayers, no out of pocket money needed for your taxes. Uh, the environment, of course, very important to us. How's this going to impact the environment? You can see a tremendous improvement here. That is what we do. And then this project is an energy conservation project. What we do is we work with the schools, we'll work with the county also, to make sure that the media knows about what we're doing, and the media, make sure that, get, how will that deserve for a program like this? Just to recap this, this is the reallocation project of what you're currently losing in inefficiencies. There will be no taxing fees. There are no capital dollars needed for this program. Train guarantees this annually for you. If we're short, we write a check. Best news is, if you go over, you keep the money. Look at the article I gave you there from Playborn County Schools. They exceeded the performance of the program every single year they've done it. Have we had to write checks to other schools? Yes, we have. So we do that. Again, no new dollars in this project at all. The debt service, all the costs associated with this project are in the project. No checks have to be with it for that. The first step, the steps here, what's next? The first step is complete, the second, that's the feasibility study. The preliminary audit is also complete. The next step in our process, where train brings in a third party, independent engineering firm to look at your buildings. They look at what we've looked at, but they also have been known, they've done a very good job with us of finding additional savings over and above what we've done at the preliminary stage. So that's made a great impact on the school districts we've worked with as well, a great investment now, what we get. Your buildings will be engineered. Studies will be done, your buildings, buildings for engineering. You're going to get more information on your buildings than you've ever had before. At the, at the last county government PDAG meeting, the question was asked, how many counties have a plan going into the future for repairs and replacements for their buildings? And that county raised their hand. This program wants to use that information to be able to do that. So as I showed you earlier, where we were, what next we were, and are now. Feasibility study is complete, results, preliminary audit is complete. You have the results in front of you from the preliminary. The proposal is in front of you. The next step is the investment grade audit. With this, the other commitment, this resolution we have before you tonight that helps us get started with this, gives us to go ahead to the price for the investment grade audit for the engineering firms due to your schools is two hundred and eight thousand dollars. This is included in all the costs you see. Only way you have to pay for that is if we came back and we delivered a whole self-funding project for the schools. With what you said we've done so far, if you decide that you say no, thank you very much. If you don't want to do this, all you would own us, you can invest in the grade audit for the third party engineering firm, not the train, third party engineering firm. Our goal is, we don't want you to write that check. Do what you have to do for the project to improve your buildings. The difference is partnerships. What train does, and that's, that's what makes a big difference. Anytime a company comes in, you look at what, where Nashville was about fifteen years ago. Did a little group talk, and at the National Football League, came in and, you look at what just happened in Nashville last year. What we do also, train for your people is included. We got train, it's included for your staff. Uh, the other area, too, that we want to make sure you know about is the partnership that we do. Go see train signs more, sponsorships that are meant for your schools. You'll see things done where, go ahead, color in the contest, we give away iPads to students in your schools that design light switch cushions. You'll see that as part of the partnership, career days. Other events that we do as well to accompany real partner with the schools to improve your schools. Whether it's long-term help as well, additional pieces, parts that you need for HVAC equipment, of course. We are the world-class leader of HVAC equipment, and so that's, we make sure we do that partnership. And that's my presentation. And that's my presentation. Any questions you might have?
Have you projected self-funding project?
Sir?
Have we projected self-funding part of the project? How much of the savings are from lighting alone?
At this point, hard to put a real percentage on it. Ballparking, I know we've got studies that show us that HPAC and lighting together use about 65 to 70% of the building that you totally spend.
Yeah, the savings of lighting, we'd have to go back and look at the setup, you're probably in the 20s, 30% of the overall, the overall.
I got a question. What is your track record with the preliminary audit and the investment grade audit compared to when the investment grade you've done?
That's a great question. So let me start by saying, we work very hard to under-promise and over-deliver. And by that, at this level of maturity that we're operating in the state of Tennessee, right now, we're running a 100%, that the investment grade audit and final proposal will be a better scenario than preliminary. And when I say better, it means that there'll be more savings, more scope, and a larger size profit. How much larger, we're typically at 10% at this stage?
I got a couple more, and then everybody else can pitch in if they would. How many total school systems do you have participating at this time? And in how many states?
Oh, wow. Okay. So I can answer, let's enter, state of Tennessee, probably 15 right now at this time. I can't answer for the United States. I can tell you that for Train in the United States, this business is around a half a billion dollars, and it's a significant business.
What is your oldest participating partner in this? Oldest one?
In the state of Tennessee, it would be Knox County, and their first construction goes back to 2007. With this program that we're offering, just to Randy's point, the program that we're offering is actually the terms that Knox County put out back when they did an R and Q. They've worked with Miesco, which is the accrediting firm that licenses folks like Train, and they, they put together a very, very tough and conservative set of business rules. And to Randy's point, you know, we've had to write some checks, some shortfall checks, and just being honest, it was us getting adjusted to the conservatism that was built into those terms. Standard, standard ESCO terms would be, if we say we're going to save you $5 million, the typical boilerplate contract language would give us the full term of, say, a 15-year term in order for those savings to materialize. The set of terms that we're offering are the exact terms that we signed up to work with Knox County under. And basically, what those terms do is they compartmentalize each and every year with a hardware reconciliation and then a reset. And so it takes, it takes any mystery or leverage that an ESCO might have, and it takes it out of the equation. It forces everybody to operate much more conservatively, really do your engineering correctly, or it can get pretty expensive for the company very quick. As you could imagine, saying we're a globally, we're a global publicated company, working for a local government. We don't want to have to write checks very often, and we certainly don't want to write reoccurring shortfall checks. That's a, that's a very uncomfortable place to be in.
I've got a couple of questions. So the first one, the IGA, the independent audit, for the front end, $280,000 is really the front-end decision. Give me a list of the timeline and the number of folks that are involved in that.
Yeah, so the IGA for Coffey County is anticipated to take around 150 days to complete. You will have teams from the auditing engineering firm, you will have teams from specialty consultants, you will have teams from Train auditing the facility. The biggest thing that happens during the IGA is the modeling of the facilities, and Train has very, very stringent requirements, excuse me, of the modeling process. Well, we're going to hold the third-party engineering firm very accountable to build baseline models that mimic the operation and utility costs of this school, going back 36 consecutive months, to within 5% on that. And the reason for that is, everything that we do, you know, and with the guarantee is, we want to make sure that, so the way this works in our business is we create these models to where we get a functioning school and a computer that mimics, you know, one of your schools right now. And then we're able to go in and plug in the net effect of each energy conservation measure to see what the effect's going to be versus the cost of implementation. And so all of those projections are transferred into the guarantee documents, and you know, you have to live by it. So it's a very painstaking process. So in this case, you could have 50 different people at various times going through the facilities over the course of the next, you know, part of 50 days.
And that's five, five months?
Yes.
So five months a day, you will get the results of this to, where?
And so let's talk about what the deliverables are. So you're going to get, you're going to get an investment grade audit, and part of the time that it takes to pull that audit together is that we actually price out everything in the audit. So you have contract rate pricing, as well as schematic design, basically 30% engineering, and you have both estimated and guaranteeable savings figures for each and every ECM at that time. So you're talking lines and lines and lines and lines of data, and you know, hardcore work that goes into it. So you end up with this document that, you know, for your future budgeting needs, you know, three years from now, you determine that, you know, it's time to replace unit X, Y, Z, whatever. You can refer back to that document, and you've got the information right there that your procurement folks can use for bidding. You can always elect to have Train, you know, I mean, you have that information, you don't have to go start from zero. The second deliverable is that we're going to give you a proposal for a performance contract, using the energy conservation measures in the investment grade audit that we can put together to produce a self-funded program. And so for instance, when you all were talking about the bond resolution, our thing would be simple, and we don't have a word resolution, our thing would be simple. You provide us the direction, and says, listen, Train, it's a great program, and what we want you to do is, we want you to, you know, we're prepared to fund what we'll self-fund. In other words, all program costs are covered by their guaranteed savings, we're okay funding that amount. The reason I bring that up is, we have a lot of counties and school systems that, like in your case, there were $7 million worth of stuff identified in preliminary audit, three and a half million of those self-fund. Almost, almost every county decides that there's other stuff that they want to go on and include, and so they pay the difference because they're buying the extra work for pennies on the dollar. You know, in other words, the other stuff doesn't completely self-fund, but it does produce savings. But our thing is this, our proposition to you and Coffey County Schools from the beginning was always a self-funded project. We're going to bring back the information, you guys can slice it and dice it any way you want. Our commitment is, you're going to get an investment grade audit that you can use for your future budgeting needs, and we're going to give you a proposal for a self-funded performance contract, carrying as much of that audit results in that contract as you can.
I understand, as it's $280,000 for an audit, energy audit of $750,000 per building, just seems expensive?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not an energy audit, it's an engineering audit. So you have to consider that, so in that audit, it's enough engineering for a company to price the work out and go to contract 100% at risk.
I understand. Again, I'm...
No, think through, think through this, because the trap is, is if you're thinking energy audit, energy audit's just a small piece of this. We've pretty much done the energy audit. Now what has to take place is the real engineering. We've got to be able to give our project developers and project engineers enough scope and enough for drawing and enough for sequence that they can go accurate and price out this work, and we stand a relatively good chance of being able to deliver and not losing our collective savings.
I, you, uh... We have no bidding in this tour date. I mean, this is...
We do.
... firm that y'all select to come in and study the school system, the building, and, and again, that, I have a problem with that, but I'm going to stop there. Again, if you've been at early meetings, and I want to make a kind of statement here, I am pleased that these folks are here, I am pleased that the school is presenting this need to us. And, and I understand totally that to get the school buildings, the school buildings energy efficient, it's likely to never get done unless you have a package deal with this. But I think we're doing it the most expensive way possible. There. And, and I admire the Train operators who put this package together. I'm sure it will deliver, again, it's a 15-year payout, so it's not a short term. Most of us will be long gone, one way or the other, before we see the end of this whole thing. But I just, it bothers me greatly, and I wish we had the wherewithal to just commit the engineering, get independent engineering proposals to the county without Train, that would come in and, and tell us the equipment that we need for the school systems, price it out, and then we would have the wherewithal to fund that for the resolution and get it done. And do it, do it totally independently. I don't know what an independent study, I've talked to engineering folks, and again, it's like I was already stating, they say $50,000 to $60,000 should get you everything, but it might not. It might not be anywhere comfortable what you're saying, but I don't know. We're hearing a good proposal. That proposal, I don't know, because we don't have another. And that, that has bothered me from the get-go. But if they go away, if somebody else here would stand up and say, well, I'd be, let's fund an engineering proposal, let's spend, and let's get funded. And that's, and that's, the other side of the problem. I'm saying this, and I just know there's another alternative, but somebody's got, if you look this down, somebody's got to run with the alternative, and I'm not sure who that is. Person's a person, though.
Question, your way, do we have to ADA that money?
Well...
We would have to ADA all the money?
No.
That you're talking about adding on to the building?
No.
Not the study, we can pay for the study, but if we gave them money to do the energy stuff to their building, we would have to ADA that money.
No, no difference in this to him. I mean...
This is self-funded, though.
Don't, don't be lulled into that term. We are funding it, okay?
We are funding it, yes, but it's coming from savings from them.
Have you?
Where we don't have to raise taxes to our citizens to pay for upgrades, that will never happen if we continue to sit here, year after year, and tell them no, and our kids in the county keep getting put in schools that could be upgraded with a way like this. And yes, there are people out there. Johnson's has never showed up, that door's been open for two and a half years, and the only people that have walked through it is Train. The only people. They're the only people that'll guarantee it. We can go get to other people and get the studies, but they're not going to guarantee it.
But we're being sucked into the importance of the guarantee without, without being realistic that says, an independent study would not only provide that, but even, even more savings. I mean, just throw it out, if we spent, I'm going to say $100,000, but this commission says, I want to get an engineering firm to come in and do an energy audit of all the school buildings and the main county buildings at the same level of the, say it's $100,000, say it's $150,000, whatever. We get this proposal in, and they say, we can do the lighting, we can do this, we can, the punch list is laid out, and it's going to cost two and a half million instead of three and a half. We save a million dollars. We have to still go to the same bond issue, we've got to go here, but it's at a two and a half million dollar level rather than a three and a half million dollar level. And, but, we're just going to have, but the savings of it, that's still going to be a general, a rural debt service obligation. And I can even back off, and I'll get that, to that in a minute. The funding of this, and the bond issue is something, everyone's got to fully understand where those pennies are going to come from. But I'm more concerned with having the right commitment, and again, this body says, if we vote them down, we're willing to do a complete countywide audit, get an engineering firm to do it, and then what they propose, we're willing to fund. And the only, and again, that just, I think will be, I think will accrue a lot of additional savings by going that way. And I, again, I, this bit followed, we took that in conversation. I want to talk to one engineering firm, it's an engineering firm out of Chattanooga, come with good reputations, and they, it kind of given me a global on this, but again, they would love to come in here and do a proposal, an independent proposal, but that's just one firm. Again, I'm not an engineer, but I just know, we owe this county and taxpayers an alternative, in my mind, I just, but if we can't, if we can't, we're not willing to go down another alternative, then we need to go with Trump, as much as I'm reluctant about it. But I think there is another better alternative. Now, I want to stop there, and just be sure everyone understands the funding of this. They're asking for $280,000, and they come back with this study. We still have another chance to say no, and we'll have a $280,000 engineering study that we'll commit to funding. So we'd like to come with $280,000 if we don't go to the next level. The next level is a bond issue, proposed to be $3.5 million. That's a rural education bond issue. To fund that will require six pennies to the rural citizens, to fund that $3.5 million. You'd take $60,000 of the sales tax, that's what, that's what it'll come It'll take $60,000 of the sales tax, that's what, that's what it'll come out to. So, you're looking at a six-cent property tax increase with the hopes that the savings coming out of the school system will lower the education debt requirement, I mean, education budget by that six cents. There, guys, they're gonna see the savings in their utility bills, and then we're gonna have to demand that saving somehow for the budgeting process. I know how difficult that is, because the school system will probably come up with other needs to replace that, those utility dollars, and I'm sure they're good needs, but, but we are actually committing to a three and a half million dollar rural education debt service commitment if we go to the next level. So, let's, don't, be sure when we vote tonight, you understand that, because six months from there, that's gonna be a, there'll be a bond resolution for three and a half million dollars that we'll have to vote on. So, it's almost building a three and a half million dollar school building, except that this is energy equipment spread through the 14 different, eight major buildings and seven or eight other school buildings in the county. So-
Would the funding be left up to budget finance to sit down with the school board and negotiate how we're gonna pay for this out of the savings?
What?
The dad gives, yeah, several school board members sitting back there right now that are here right now, but I'm sure that they would step forward, I would take and say that they, you know, would meet with us and come up with a plan to, to pay for this out of their savings, these people are gonna care to take the savings.
My, uh, Commissioner. Uh, I don't think I'm speaking out of turn, I believe for schools, I've investigated other escos and options, I believe Trane was the only company they voted after sponsoring the county commission. That's one. Two, you're already spending the money right now. Let's, let's be very clear. And three, Commissioner, I'm not gonna try to even get into this discussion, I can only assume that public county's finances are completely different than every other county and school system we're doing, because nobody else is going to the taxpayers to look for the debt service, that's what this program brings. And you can certainly hire an engineering firm and contractors of your choice, and you can take on 100% of the cost of the debt service and the risk associated with the job. Do you, do you have that option every day? We're offering you an option to take your excess utilities back, guaranteed by Trane, to go do some of this work without doing anything. That's it, plain and simple, and here's the thing, here's the beauty of the program. Don't take my word for it, okay? We'll give you the same list of references, which is every single job we have going on that we give to Mr. Barton, and you can make the same phone calls and go visit with their finance folks, and their procurement folks, and their Board of Education folks, and get your own opinion, because I can't tell you how to do your finances, but I can tell you that I, I'm not, I, I don't understand why public county would be different than somebody else.
We have three school systems, and that's the biggest issue-
Yeah, and in the eyes of the state, let's be clear about this, we talked about this, there are no split dollars here, because it's coming out of the school's existing budget, okay? That, that is from the Controller's Office, and, and all of that documentation is available to you and every Commissioner and head board of education member here.
If the county, if we had one unified school system, this would be a lot easier decision, because we don't, the county has gotta pick up, the rural folks of the county's gotta pick up 100% of the debt service and have to hope that a multi-passionate school board that covers the whole county will keep the ball over, I mean, to keep the eye on the, the savings, that the reduction of the, the debt, the, the reduction of the school budget will flow to enough pennies to offset that bond issue. Now, and we gotta do it for 15 years, which is a problem.
You're not doing it on your own. Part of the program is you will have a measurement and verification program regulated by the International Performance Measurement and Verification Protocol. You will have monthly, quarterly, and annual reporting and reconciliation at your utility meter. All you need to do is figure out between you and the schools how you're gonna account for the savings to reconvert that to debt service.
But I think that's, I think that's the issue that Rush is getting to, right now, the county becomes responsible for the debt.
That is correct.
The school isn't responsible for it, the county is.
That, that needs to-
The savings go in their pocketbook.
You know, well, if you-
Now, how do they get back to ours to pay for it? And that hasn't been-
We-
-brokeed or worked or assessed or any-
What we would suggest is, is contact some of the other folks that are doing these programs and find out how they're doing it, because everybody seems to have their own little unique cracker sauce, but in every case, they're taking the savings and offsetting the debt service. So, whether, whether on July 2nd, you're taking the guaranteed savings for the utility bill in each school and reducing that budget by that amount and putting that into debt service, or whatever you choose to do, the whole concept is you take it and use it.
Well, I know this is, under maintenance of effort, I don't, we can't reduce the school's budget, so if there's $300,000 of savings in utilities the first year, nothing else changes, this, the, we have no way to tap into it, because we still gotta fund the same pennies. It might, next year, somewhere, you could sit there and say, well, uh, we're not gonna fund your increase, and again, if they came through and needed $300,000 more teachers or equipment or whatever, and they said, well, we got the utility savings for that, if we didn't have the utility savings, would we be coming to this commission for, uh, education dollars, which they normally would? And of course, if, if it's, if, 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 uh, the wherewithal, we would look hopefully favorable on what they would recommend, again, we, not always, 100% the case, but we, we generally trust the school board to come through with a good budget, okay? So, but, so what we're doing is saying that if they came through with needed new expenditure, salaries or whatever-
Buses or, you know, whatever, yeah, that's the difference.
Whatever, but, and they say, well, we, instead of coming to you for a tax increase, we're gonna use the utility savings for that, okay? Which is kinda swapping dollars for dollars. And, but the point still comes back that we're, we are, the rural folks are putting six cents on their property tax now, well, sometime in June and July, if the study comes through, to fund all those future requests that would've come through as budget requests.
Mr. Brigger, uh, a few years ago, I think it was 2007, we received a interest-free, uh, energy loan that had to have your own approval to replace, uh, the killer to high school, to replace some unit at what we're calling now the Raider Academy, it was the old middle school, and some other HVAC and electrical work. And the school system had to pay that off, which is, I understand the school system has to pay this off, and so we have put $70,000 a year in our budget each year to pay that off, and that was, uh, you know, a, a loan approved, had to be approved by y'all, but we're paying for it each year out of our dollars.
I understand, and that's a different type of loan than what's being proposed here.
I, I-
It's on a different set of books. That one was a unique one that could, could be put on schools, on the school system. If the school system could put this debt directly on their books, that'd be one thing.
All of them are doing it.
Every single one?
Every single one.
Yes.
They're using the bar of the bonding capacity of the county to secure the funds, and the school system will take in on the debt service.
Yes. And, Mr. Overman, let's not be unstick on that.
Is to go talk to the school system and find out what they're doing, there's a conversation between the county and the school.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. C.L. Overman with Criminal Securities, uh, been my honor to serve the county for about the last 12 years as a bond advisor. Uh, as, as you know, Mr. Brigger, and I think most of the Chris and commissioners know, our job is to get you the cheapest money we can get you to fund this project with if you decide to go ahead. We're providing it somewhere in the neighborhood of 3% right now on any bonds that might be issued, uh, for a 15-year period of time, obviously, interest rates are still attractive, so that's really our role in this whole process, we're not in the engineering business. We have worked with, um, other, um, firms, such as Trane, and, uh, I live in Knox County, and we are Knox County's financial advisor, and I follow works for the county mayor there, and we've worked with them through, uh, the projects that Owen has referred to in Knox County. We've also worked with Jefferson County, uh, with Hardin County, with, uh, Campbell County, several other counties in, in the state that have this kind of project. Truth of matter is, uh, pretty much what you're talking about is, are the internal workings of financing the county that we really don't get into, but, uh, plain and simply, these would be, uh, uh, general obligation bonds, uh, secured by the rural tax base, as you're saying. How exactly that's handled internally is up to you and the mayor and the finance director and, and schools to work that out. We really haven't run into, it's, I can recall, any conflicts where there wasn't an agreement, whether, uh, written or stated between the schools and the, and the, uh, county to make sure those dollars, if they're safe, that flows for their expenses. And the other similar projects we've seen with, uh, Trane and some of Trane's competitors, they work pretty smoothly, and, uh, obviously, we're not in the business to support their proposals, we're here to help you if you decide to do financing, uh, but, uh, they would be bonds secured by the, of the county through the rural tax base, however, the way the rating agency is looking at these kinds of bonds, it's very similar to a revenue bond, that, say, an electric, uh, utility or a water sewer utility might issue, where they have a revenue stream, in other words, they look at the savings that Owen and Randy are talking about, and it's the revenue streams that were to a utility, and, uh, rating agency takes that into consideration in their rate bonds. You're at an A-plus rating now, and our goal would be to keep you there and even to try to increase that. So, I'm not sure if I've answered your question, but we've seen these, uh, processes work in other counties throughout the state. Uh, Knox County, where I live, is, is our headquarters, is, is, is a prime example of how these projects work, and, uh, from our point of view, they're, uh, through straight forward, good engineering projects combined with the low interest rate environment, which I, I assume that they have a good time moving ahead. I'm certainly not saying they support their proposal, I'm just looking at it purely from financial.
Well, I, I still, I, I think, too, I don't see how the debt could build school systems, books.
Well, that's, you're an accountant, and I'm not, and I'm not, the, the internal transfer of funds that will support the debt service payments is something that's worked out within the county.
Yeah.
And yeah, I agree with several commissioners who said that's something that has to be done internally between Mariana and the mayor and the school folks and Joe and everybody that would be involved in this.
I, I, well, I, with everyone here, I think that is so critical, this decision, before we vote, to have that understanding, um, that I just don't see how this commission could even total this resolution on.
Mr. Brigger, I have one question for him, as far as the comments you've made, I understand it, uh, online, that is my concern as well, is how does the school system pay back the bond to the rural debt service? You know, we say we work it internally, I think there needs to be agreement upfront and have it written down, so we well understand it, so we don't get the situation that we go into, uh, we agreed or we didn't agree. I'm not, uh, as well as wanting any kind of debt on, on the county for some savings, even though it's a good plan, uh, it is gonna cost a lot, um, but I'm in agreement with you, Mr. Brigger, we need to understand this, how we're gonna make that transition payment back into the county out of the school funds of savings, and then I understand that there will be significant savings initially, and then it, it trails off as the program alive starts to end over the 15 years, so it needs to be well understood, so we need to get into a predict, we've seen in previous commissions.
Ken, I've, I've got a question, too, just, you'll remember the numbers better than me, but in capital outlay, we did a mini version of this, with the lighting and, and stuff, and ended up getting more savings than what we anticipated, but we did without adding any money to the budget, but we did have a plan and moved it forward doing it, so there is, there is a way to do it without having something to the fore you, but as Rush said, if we're, if we're not gonna stand up and set that plan in motion and say, we're gonna stand behind this before we're going, then that becomes an issue.
We did borrow the money from the livelihoods, we borrowed the money, and that'll be paid off in three to four years, and then the money after that, yes, yes, the money after that, and Robert took that home as an initiative, and we hired him. I can't give you savings over costs now, I know it was better than what we thought.
Yeah, it's about 30% as much, I reckon, better than what we-
Do you have a follow-up questions for the gentleman from Trane? Your third-party audit cost is $208,000. Is that an estimated cost, or is that solid figures that you receive from your third-party team based off your preliminary audit you've already conducted?
Yes, that's, that's a firm proposal from the third-party firm, there is no markup on that audit.
Mr. Husky has a comment.
A question, is there any one of the schools that you've done this for, where you did it for a county system, that they also had a city system within the county that was independent of the county system? Do you understand the question?
I, I do, and, and, uh, to date, I don't believe that we have, we have a number of systems that have that same scenario, Blunt County being one, hence the question about the split dollars that was posed to the state's Controller's Office, and their, their ruling is that because it's coming out of the existing school budget, the split dollars do not apply.
You, could you get us a copy of that opinion?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I just ask one thing, um, since, because this is the most critical thing as far as many of y'all's schools are accepting this payment, has the school board discussed this amongst themselves at board meetings as to how to maybe facilitate this problem that seems to be the, the major barrier here?
Um, the, we understand that many, that different school systems are doing this, a lot of them, um, are doing it in different ways, but, um, we are investigating that with other finance offices and other districts, and so we do, um, I know I speak for the board, we absolutely don't expect to have these savings and not pay the guaranteed savings back towards, um, for payment on this bond, so I guess the fact that that's even a question, I guess that comes down to trust, I'm not sure, but we are willing to enter into whatever tie written, verbal, um, because we do intend to, to use this money wisely and, and make sure that, that we follow through with the, the obligations that a project like this entails. So, we are investigating the best way to do that, but we do- So we are investigating the best way to do that, but we do work well with the county finance, and we, together, the school system and the county finance will definitely find a way to make that work internally.
But has the board actually discussed this problem?
I don't think we've thought of it as a problem, quite honestly. I think we just assumed that would be the way that it would be handled all along. I don't think there was ever any other intent, other than that we would somehow work out where the savings would come from what's already being allotted to the school system.
Well, I would just have to say, repeat what Mr. Bricken did. Based on history, to say one thing and then do another, which is easy to do, and I'm not saying, you know, you guys wouldn't do that, but as he says, over a 15-year period, if there's not some genuine system set up in place that the school board assumes to be able to pay this without accidentally the county ending up eating all of this, we create real problems. And so for that reason, just like Mr. Bricken mentioned, if we don't, if we can't get the board to come to some reality check as far as how we can actually fix this problem, I think it is a problem.
Could I ask, Mr. Henley, could I ask you a question? You're the chairman. Could we get, like, there are four of you here right now, which is the majority of your board. Could we get a verbal commitment from y'all tonight that would mean your next board meeting that you would have a written resolution to deal with the payment back to the county for the savings?
I don't mind putting that on the agenda and having that as an agenda item to discuss. I'm not going to commit to that without any kind of discussion with the other board. But again, as Dr. McCall said, I, it was my interpretation that the funds that were saved at the point of what the Train people presented to us would be funded towards the bond issue. That's the way my vote was, and I'll speak for me only, that's the way my vote was in this case. I felt those funds would be used to support the debt.
Can I take that one step further?
Yes, sir.
I'd like some discussion, too. Let's say you get all of the savings, $300,000 or whatever it is that we're going to use, and you get double that. I would like to have some kind of understanding between us and the county and the school on where those additionals would be utilized for. I know there's needs. I know there's things you do. My concern is things like if the schools uses them for other things that could add to ADA money, where we're paying for buses separately now so that we don't get it in ADA. I just don't want to create issues when there might have been other alternatives that would have kept the ADA dollars constant and lessened that problem for the county. And I'm not sure if it would, but I sure would like an understanding before we stepped off into that.
I understand your point, and that's, that's something that we can discuss as a board. I'm not willing, like I said, to meddle with the board's purposes here, but I will definitely discuss that.
Yeah, but I'd like your board to get together and have some plan and get with Mr. Bricken and budget and finance and get an agreement. If you're going to push this forward, I mean, there's a lot of money involved, and I always want to make sure we have an understanding so that there aren't hurt feelings and upset later. I mean, let's work it out now, and then we'll have a plan that I'm working on with this. And then I've got a question back to the Train folks. In this sort of, I may mistake this, but my view of the world is, you all done your audit, you're putting together your plan, you have, you have your sales set up where this is going. And now, to validate your plan, because you're going to go at risk on this, you need an outside audit to come in and confirm all of that. And I go at risk of paying to guarantee that you did your job right. And I sort of don't like paying the $208,000 one way or the other, because I think it's your problem, not my problem.
Yeah, so the risk that you take on by authorizing us to proceed with the investment-grade audit is that, is that the investment-grade audit proves out everything that we've done, we bring back a program that's self-funding as we're advertising, and then for some reason, unbeknownst to us, you just decide not to proceed, or then you just bought an engineering one. That's your risk.
Yeah, I understand, but I don't need that audit. I just need you to sign the guarantee. I don't need that audit to sign the guarantee.
I'll just sign the guarantee without the audit.
Then it's your risk that you're mitigating with my costs.
So you're saying, you're already spending the money. What we've advertised is, all program costs are covered by the guaranteed savings, period. So y'all are spending the money anyways. Every month that goes by, you're just giving the money to the utility provider. That's your decision. If you're comfortable doing that, then continue on doing it.
We prefer having it in the schools. I'm just saying.
So.
But the risk, the risk factor is, I'm paying for the audit you need to validate. You're stepping up and giving your board this money off of you.
All program, yes, that's right. All program.
I don't need, I just need you to sign your guarantee. You pay for your validation.
We are, as part of the program, that your savings are funded.
I understand.
Yes, you're correct.
I have a follow-up question, also. Early on, you mentioned TBA rebates. Can you explain more in detail for me? I'm quite ignorant on that.
Yes. In October of 2013, TBA shut down the rebate program.
That was for energy efficiency savings?
Correct. So things like lighting projects and new air conditioning and so on and so forth, TBA had a program out where you go through the application process, there's some inspections and so on and so forth, and you get some rebates.
That was for electricity and windows and insulation, basically.
Anything that could reduce electrical consumption.
Edgeback and everything.
They had some, the term escapes me.
Sort of like the energy credit you used to give from under the same when you.
Yeah, their program consists of two, of two types of applications. One's like a standard short form, and then the other is a more involved custom form, where you have to substantiate the engineering and so on and so forth. So anyway, so they terminated that program back in October of 2013, and they have now reinstated a rebate program effective January 2015. The program is different. We're still learning and finalizing all the details and nuances of the program, but from a timing perspective, Coffee County schools, local Coffee County government facilities will be able to capitalize on those rebates.
Only split from that day, though.
Yeah, yeah. In other words, as long, as long as you have it already done, and what, you know, you basically put the project together, then you submit everything to TBA, you know, applications, respect anything else, and you do your whole inspection process, and they, you know, they do a pre-inspection and then a post-inspection and so on and so forth. And then through the local utility providers, you end up with a rebate check for everything you did audit it.
Is that something your organization would be assisting the school system with?
Yes, 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 yes. And I mean, we, we really, you know, just being honest, we don't have a good feel right now today for the newly-instated rebate program. So to kind of put some scale to it, so like, I know these figures, so like in the Knox County system, we were doing $15 million phases before those rebates would be around a half a million dollars a phase. And I mean, you know, that's substantial money. Obviously, Coffee County probably offered less than $100,000, but anytime you get, you know, cash money. And, you know, you can use those funds to either offset the amount of the loan you would go toward, or, you know, let your crew all consider. Our whole program, the way that we advocate our program is, hey, it's, it's budget neutral or budget positive each and every year, or it's however you tell us to put it together. In other words, we're pretty far behind, you know, but the.
You'd actually do the whole segment, right?
Oh, yeah, sure. And I'm not going to tell you that we wouldn't, but as an example, so the finance director for Campbell County, when we did Campbell County program, you know, he looked at all the data, and actually, we were at this point, right now, going forward, and it was time to commit for the, for the investment-grade audit. And he said, "Look, here's what I want you guys to do." He was very, very explicit with what he would be okay with, accepting his guaranteed savings versus not. And so for instance, you know, there's energy savings, there's operational savings, there's maintenance savings, there's cost cap, across the board, there's all these different things. Well, he just made it simple. He said, "Look, whatever you can guarantee in energy savings, and you can get the project to work off of that, that's what I'm prepared for in front of the county commission." So that was simple for us, okay? Here, our understanding, based on the discussions of the bond resolutions or anything else, we're kind of taking it as, hey, whatever you can make work off of guaranteed energy savings and budget due for or budget positive event, that's what we would consider, and that's how we would structure the program. Any, any available rebates or grant funds or anything like that, we would bring to your all's attention, to the schools, and you, you'd decide how you want to apply that, whether you want to apply it to the program or apply it to something else. It's your money, not ours, is the way we look at it.
Mr. Chairman, I'm about to make motion to table this resolution to the next commission meeting, and then request, after that motion table was voted on, it's voted favorable, then asked that some ad hoc committee made up of the two budget directors for the schools and the county, and the county mayor and the school board director, and whoever thinks might should be added to that, work out, develop a plan of how the funding is, from the savings, is assured to flow through to cover the debt service so the taxpayers is not exposed to this increase. Now I make a motion to table the resolution.
Mr. Bricken.
No discussion.
You had some stipulations to the motion to table.
Not in, I said, I may not have added after the motion to table was voted on.
So you vote, you vote to table instead of postpone.
I vote to table.
Do I have second to the motion? A motion second. All in favor of the motion to table, let me know by a show of hands. Motion passes.
Now, I'd like to make a motion for the mayor, I'm going to say the mayor appointing committee, but with recommendation that the two budget directors, I can't speak for the school board budget director, would ask, but y'all will work it out. Get it, get it, get it, get it, get it together to work out an agreement so we'll understand how the funding of this is going to be agreed on and get something in writing so we can see and understand.
Do you want that brought back through budget and finance before it comes back to the whole commission?
I think the budget finance would be defined, to come to budget finance after, but I think that the, there's got to be an ad hoc committee formed by the school system people and our people first.
I'm just saying. I would like to see a back-renewed budget and finance report council or commission, just so we understand.
So that's enough for a motion.
I'm sure it's not clear which one.
No, we'll work it out. Ad hoc committee to be appointed, our surprise mayor and two budget directors, or we'll form an ad hoc committee to work out the agreement, the verbiage of that, and submit that or present that to the budget finance committee as soon as possible. I second that. Have a motion and a second.
Now, this is tabled, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. This is tabled to the next full legislative body meeting, correct?
You can add that to the table, a table, it's just a table, and somebody else take it off the table. If you postpone it for the next meeting, you can do that.
But you can do the same thing. All we gotta do is postpone, take it off the table.
And anybody who voted in favor of that, take it off the table. Anybody, take it off the table. Take that motion. Anybody, take it off the table. Any other discussion? Any further discussion?
What we're voting on now, for the budget. Are you sure this is added to unfinished business at the next commission meeting? Ballot.
Next meeting. Motion being essentially that you were, you state that, sure.
You said it the last time.
Okay. Mayor and two budget directors, we get, we comprise, form an ad hoc committee to work out the verbiage of the agreement of the funding between the county and school system and submit that to budget and finance as soon as possible for your review.
And you can expand that committee by a rest, if you want more than the four, you said.
Who are the former mayor and two budget directors?
And anybody else that you think can, would add to the party's problem?
Insert a document, call him, yeah.
Could you have any of that be finished by our next meeting, which would be in March? Is that correct, or we have meetings everywhere?
I would, and I would desire to have it back at our March meeting if all else.
Our next meeting, our next, our next meeting.
My question is to Mr. Bricken, what would you refer it to about table or remove from the.
I mean, y'all done passed a motion to table. When you want to delay an item, there's two or three ways you could done it. Sounds like what probably would have been better here would have been a motion to refer it to a committee, and that'd been part of the main motion, and for them to report it back next month. But I mean, the way y'all doing this for work, you've tabled it, and you've made a separate motion to appoint a committee. The only thing is that you will have to have a motion to take it off, take the resolution off the table.
The way you put that in unfinished business is take the motion.
Right. That is correct. There's several different ways that this can be addressed.
Do I have second? A motion is, forever discussion, or?
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I got a question on this motion. This is strictly to table it, and being reviewed as presented.
The motion to table is already passed.
This is second motion.
All right, what is?
Motion that mayor, two budget directors, and anyone with something to form an ad hoc committee to work out the agreement, the understanding on, on these particulars that we discussed, to present, to submit to budget finance as soon as possible. They review that, and then make a recommendation after you.
This strictly for the transfer of funds back before, correct? That's what we're worried about.
Under the way. Yes. Any further discussion?
One more thing. Is it possible for, for, to get one or two more questions for the Train individuals before they leave town? I mean, I'm just saying, when can we do that? individuals before they leave town, I mean, I just said the wind, can we do that?
I could, I could vote for the motion, all further motion let be known by show of hands. Motion carries, thanks sir, now, Mr. Trump.
Mr. Baldwin, when I was reading over your spreadsheet, the, all the little green and red X's that I see there, if I understand this correctly, this, I'd say we probably got an AC unit that should be changed out tomorrow on one of the school buildings, this particular pole, three and a half million over 15 years, does not replace AC units, correct?
AC units are, there are some AC units identified right now in the state that will be replaced, there are some other AC units in this state right now that will be retro commissioned.
Included in this three and a half million. Well, there's no X's, the spreadsheet says HVAC upgrades, there's not a green X in that column?
There are some there.
I thought you had the green to replace and the four or five, three conditions.
We would have to go back into the audit data to get you a little more granular information.
I want to bring that up, because a lot of people think this is going to take care of all our air conditioning problems from now on, it does, we just need an air conditioner six months down the road, that is, we're still got a page, correct?
Yeah, the $7 million, the total audit results addressed everything that the audit was found, that was in need of replacement, retrofitting, tuning up, what have you, within a reasonable timeframe, the portion of that that'll self-fund is about happening, you know, so as the presentation pointed out, you still have your normal operating budget, your normal capital budgets, and everything that you have to work with, it's just a way to get your stuff done for nothing.
This is a terminology word, there are two things, this is putting an area audit to help itself, some say HVAC retro commission, I think I understand that, some say HVAC upgrade, is that an, or is that just, have you been in the conference this month, or is that?
No, the retro commissioning is taking the existing equipment, taking it apart, cleaning it up, and then basically restoring it to its original operating condition, you know, or if it's close to likely, it could be.
Changing three on?
Would not be a retrofit three on, that would be a top off, return charge, essentially each year, okay, if it says HVAC upgrade, that's typically HVAC system replacement, in some cases it would be lifetime replacement, in some cases it would be an engineered solution where we would be going to a different technology.
Any other questions for Randy or Orlin or Ciel? I appreciate you gentlemen being here.
Thank you.
And your presentation. The other question.
Resolution 2015-05, resolution to amend Coffee County's sounding resolution number 2006-39 to re-sign the residential property at 3180 Murfreesboro Highway from RS1 located the residential district to C1 dual center district.
I make the motion to be approved. Motion second, discussion?
This does include that it has to go before the new summary review, as I have understood earlier. But the process does.
Mr. Clark here, see, I don't finish to address anything or clarify anything, but I appreciate him being here, no further questions, okay, so you've heard the motion, second, any other, further discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
This is actually remodeling existing structures, it's not, it's not a demolition and reconstruction.
No, it's remodeling an existing structure.
And basically the four, four different divisions of this, and the four apartment units, is that?
Four different units? Yes, sir.
And of course, it's going to have to conform to all standards as far as electrical, fire, marshals, and so, one thing I might just mention, of course, the planning commission is recommending this, I assume Mr. Morris, you know, to us, that we approve this and move forward, the one thing that I might just offer up, and we've already spent enough time, now everybody's tired, but, when we're looking at going from, you know, going to the C1's, RS1's, the C1's, and we're looking at this area out to Murfreesboro Highway, I hope the planning commission will consider and look at possibility of developing these C1 districts along these developmental thoroughfares, like we have at Highway 55 going toward Telahomea, because I'd like to see the planning commission maybe instead just reacting individually to these as they come up to consider that, maybe 300-foot depths, C1's along the five developmental quarters coming in Manchester, and if you don't mind taking that back to the planning commission, I'll just offer it up that way, and I think that'd be something good to look at, and then we would be consistent that way in what we're doing, and be contiguous in what we're doing.
So a motion and second, any further discussion? There being none, all in favor of the motion as presented, let be known by saying aye. The opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Do we have a report of any standing committees?
I'm giving you that before you buy a new report.
Start saying you want to turn the light out when you leave?
I'd like a motion, please, Mr. Kelly, you're doing that.
Okay, now seriously, Mark, do you have any, okay, report of any special committees? As of yesterday, our jail did not pass a smoke test, and I didn't want to talk to Robert this morning, so I don't, you know, that's where I'm at right now, with Andy.
They worked late last night, through the night, they came back this morning, and said they were.
It did, so we did pass the smoke test.
It's based on the state by law, that we do the most.
All right, so, we just got to that place in New Mexico, okay, no report of any special committees, any statements and or announcements?
I have an announcement, I'd like to invite everyone Saturday morning to the library here in Manchester, where I'll be participating in a book signing, there'll be about 10, 15 authors there, and signing books, so you're all invited, 10 to 2.
Thank you, sir, I'll get a copy of that. Any other announcements? Mayor?
The headliner of the ballroom this year for the Good Joe.
All right, thank you, sir.
Who is the? The outlet.
Any other statements or announcements, any public comments, this way.
I'd like to make an announcement, that I'm Meryl Howard, and I'm a local coordinator for the sacred assembly that's coming in Coffee County, March the 8th, at 3 o'clock, and we will be praying for our churches, all churches invited, we will be praying for our nation, and our county, and the world, so I would, I would love to invite everyone, I would love to see, right, and it's going to be in front of the courthouse, at 3 o'clock, March the 8th, I would love to see the whole courthouse, where filled with people praying for our nation, especially for this young generation, especially for those that just are entrapped in a jail system, so please turn out for that event, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Howard, and I have heard her recognition, and I have heard every church in this county that this made, and be supportive, and this is a historic event, critically important, so thank you, Ms. Howard. Any other public comments? Or what, excuse me?
The only comment I have is, I spoke about the CBDG grant, and I don't want to take up any more time, there were not, there's many commissioners, and there was a friend at that time, they got that position there, but those of you who were here, if you would please share the information with your coworkers here, I would greatly appreciate that, if you have any questions, you can feel free to call me about it, and I would like to be sure that all commissioners, all residents, are suited to the title, and I would like to take it seriously, I'd like for you to listen to the information, to agree with the handout that I gave, that there is a problem, you can contact the control of the treasury, and Mr. Griffin, you will enjoy it, because my cousin gives this information, and she is CPA, she is OCD, you are.
Thank you, Ms. Callum. Rush, is her face red, or what? Do we have to have a motion to adjourn, please? Second, all the things that can be done.